Hey Lauren, we're just about to get started. We're gonna go live momentarily.
Good morning. Sorry, I was having technical issues with my internet.
We're now live on YouTube.
Morning.
Lauren, I'm just gonna mute your mic, okay? Good morning.
We are live on the website, ready to go.
Alrighty, good morning and welcome to this morning's Queensborough President Land Use Public Hearing. This hearing is being livestreamed on www queensbp.org. This hearing will be held virtually pursuant to recently enacted provisions in the open meetings law, permitting fully virtual meetings until June 8, 2022. For those who wish to testify and haven't already pre-registered to do so, please visit www queensbp.org/landuse. Please note your opportunity to speak will follow those who are pre-registered. Written testimony is welcome from those who are unable to testify. All written testimony must be received by 5:00 PM today and may be submitted by email to vgarvey@queensbp.org or by conventional mail sent to the office of the Queensborough President at 120.55 Queens Boulevard, Room 226, Q Gardens, New York, 11424. Today, I'm pleased to be joined by my planning director and staff, Vicky Garvey, Lisa Atkins, Vanessa Ordones, and Malik Sanders. Lisa, please review how this hearing will proceed.
Good morning. The public hearing shall be conducted in the following manner. The applicant will be called to give a description of the zoning action requested, an explanation of the proposed project, and respond to any questions from the chair. The floor will then be open for public speakers. Each speaker will have three minutes. A signal will be heard when the three minutes have passed. When you are called, please identify yourself for the record and if you are formally speaking as a representative or member of a group, the calendar number or application you are speaking about, and whether you are for or against the item. Then you may begin your testimony. At the discretion of the chair, if there are a large number of speakers on any particular item, it may be put on second call. Speakers for and against that item may also be called to testify on an alternating basis. Please note that in order to testify at this virtual hearing, you must keep your camera on during your testimony and display your name accurately on Zoom. If at any point you have technical issues, please let our planning staff know in the chat and we will assist you. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you, Lisa. You've just been advised on the proceedings of this hearing and how it will be conducted. Please keep your comments focused on the application you are speaking about. Please stay within the allotted three minutes when you hear the signal, that bell you heard. Dang dang dang. Please wrap up and finish your comments. This chair, which is I, reserves the right to ask speakers for clarifications or further information regarding the application or comments. Lisa, please call the first calendar item.
Calendar item number one. ULP number 210394ZMQ. The applicant is Kenfa Madison LLC. Affected Community Board number 11. Applicant, please begin.
Good morning Borough President Richards. Thank you and your staff for hosting this hearing. My name is Frank St. Jacques. I'm with Ackerman LLP. We're a land use counsel for this project. I'm joined by Josh Reinsmith from my office and Lauren George from Constantinople and Volone, as well as members of the applicant team who appear to be joining soon and others may join during the presentation. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Then myself and Lauren will introduce the project and then I'll run through the project details and we're happy to answer any questions. Just wanna confirm that you guys can see my screen.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lauren George and I just want to introduce the Mazumi Restaurant and the Chang family that runs the Mazumi Restaurant. This family has been here in this location on Northern Boulevard for over 10 years from 2010 and this restaurant has been a successful community member and, you know, a popular location and destination for group dining. This application enables this family-run restaurant to expand and provide a place for social gatherings in the community. They've been a really integral part of this neighborhood, as I said, for over 10 years. And they survived COVID and thank goodness, you know, they really retooled their business, changed their business model, and got really creative so that they could continue serving during the pandemic, creating homemade tables outside. This beautiful outdoor space that you see in the bottom middle of this photo is from their parking lot and they created an outdoor dining section there. And really, you know, we wanna be able to continue supporting the 30-plus jobs that already exist at this restaurant and expanding the employment opportunities here. So this is really, we see this as a critical economic development project and something that's reasonable to support this local small business. Thank you.
Great, thanks Lauren. So, we're here today with an application seeking zoning map amendment to establish a C22 commercial overlay within the existing R12 residential zoning district on a portion of the south side of Northern Boulevard, which you can see on the left-hand side of the screen. And as Lauren noted, the rezoning would facilitate the enlargement of the existing Mazumi Restaurant at a former Getty gas station site, which is adjacent to the existing Mazumi Restaurant. There's a rendering of the proposed enlargement on the right-hand side of the screen. The proposed commercial overlay would allow commercial use subject to the use and bulk regulations and the zoning resolution. We believe that would establish predictable zoning regulations for commercial use within the rezoning area. Sorry. This portion of Northern Boulevard serves as an entryway to Douglasston from the west. The proposed zoning area outlined in yellow is outlined in yellow and is zoned with an R12 residential zoning district. The Mazumi development site is outlined in red. Alley Pond Park is on either side of Northern Boulevard and the Golf Center is to the north. To the east, there is additional commercial development along Northern Boulevard and generally low-density residential development in the areas beyond Northern Boulevard. The properties within the rezoning area are all commercial uses. And as you can see, there's additional commercial use along Northern Boulevard on the south side and the north side outside of the rezoning area. Just to the east of 234th Street, there's a large auto sales dealership. And then there's an office building, another block to the east. And then just past Douglasston Parkway, there's a local retail strip, as well as Alley Pond Golf Center directly north of the rezoning area. So zooming in a little bit, you can see the existing commercial context. Again, the rezoning area is outlined in yellow and the development site is outlined in red. All the commercial uses within the rezoning area were initially permitted through Board of Standards and Appeals or BSA variances because this area has never been zoned for commercial use. Many of these variance terms have been extended for decades. For example, the former gas station site was initially a 1929 variance. There's a 1938 variance, one of the auto uses down the street. And they range from 1948, 1968 into the 90s. The existing Mazumi Restaurant was permitted by a 2010 variance. And as you can see, Alley Pond Park to the north was permitted by a 1965 variance. So it's really decades of non-residential use, non-conforming use that was permitted through the BSA variance process. Zooming in a little bit further to just show the Mazumi site. It's just under 69,000 square feet, including the approximately 19,000 square foot former gas station site. There's been restaurant use at the site, as I just noted, since around 1976 by BSA variance. And the Mazumi Restaurant began operating in 2010 after receiving BSA approval. I've noted a couple times that the rezoning area was zoned R12. The R12 zoning was established back in 1961 with the enactment of the zoning resolution. But as we noted, some of those variances predated and postdated the establishment of the R12 zoning. So it's really never, this is an area that's never had residential growth since the 1961 zoning was established imposing that R12 zoning. R12 zoning is a low-density residential district. It only permits detached, single-family residential homes. It has a minimum lot area and width requirements. And only limited community facility use is permitted and commercial use is, of course, not permitted. It has a maximum permitted floor area ratio, or FAR, of 0.5 and a 25-foot street wall and above that, a height is governed by a sky exposure plane. Single parking spaces is required for each residence. But again, as we noted, this portion of Northern Boulevard is entirely occupied by commercial uses permitted by BSA variances despite this R12 zoning. So this map shows the current zoning map on the left-hand side of the screen and the proposed overlay on the right-hand side of the screen. The proposed C22 commercial overlay is typically mapped within residential districts with high off-street parking requirements such as R12. These overlays are mapped along streets that serve local retail needs and are found widely through the city's lower and medium-density areas. The C22 commercial overlay allows a maximum commercial floor area ratio, or FAR, of 1.0 but has a high off-street parking requirement and a maximum street wall height of 30 feet which both serve to effectively control the scale of any future development. So this map shows a portion of Northern Boulevard at the eastern edge of Community District 11, including the rezoning area at the center. And as you can see, there are overlays along nearly all of Northern Boulevard, except the small portion surrounding the site. This is typical of Northern Boulevard throughout Queens and it's no different within this portion of Community District 11. As you can see on the left-hand side of the screen, there's C22 overlays coming up to the Cross Island Parkway. And then those C22 overlays pick up again and switch to C12 overlays all the way to the edge of the community district. I'll note again that the entire zoning area is commercial and then that remaining portion of Northern Boulevard that doesn't have an overlay to the east of the rezoning area is developed with both commercial, which are shaded and red, and community facility uses. You'll note the one residential use on the south side of Douglasston Parkway is a multifamily residential building. So what does the C22 do and why do we believe it's appropriate? The proposed C22 overlay is a cohesive way to address the non-conforming commercial use along this portion of Northern Boulevard. We believe it would create continuity instead of on an ad hoc or site-by-site basis. The R12 C22 zoning would ensure certainty and promote predictable growth subject to zoning regulations rather than contingent on the variance findings, such as the site's uniqueness and economic hardship. The certainty provided by zoning encourages investment. This is in contrast to the BSA process, which due to limited terms and uncertainty discourages investment and anything other than the current uses on the strip at the entrance to Douglasston, which are largely auto-related uses with the exception of the Mazumi Restaurant. C22 permits a range of uses. These include community facility uses, retail and service establishments that serve local shopping needs, and then other local retail and service uses that would serve the local area. I would note that multifamily use is not permitted. The R12 zoning controls and would continue to control any residential development proposed with the C22 overlay. So again, only single-family homes would be permitted. There would be no mixed use permitted and no multifamily. Hotel uses are also not permitted within the C22 overlay. So with respect to the Mazumi Restaurant expansion, the proposed C22 overlay would facilitate the enlargement of the existing restaurant. Mazumi seeks to provide additional space and amenities for its customers and the surrounding neighborhood. One thing that we've heard in all of our outreach to the community and even at the community board, the Land Use Committee and the community board meetings, that Mazumi is a loved local restaurant that has served the community for over a decade. The proposed enlargement will allow them to continue operating in that manner and will add an additional about 15,834 square feet of commercial floor area. When completed, the proposed enlarged building will have just shy of 23,000 square feet of floor area and height of 30 feet. So on the 68,000 or just shy of 69,000 square foot lot, that results in a floor area ratio of .33, so far below the 1.0 that would be permitted. And this is largely due to the parking requirement, which I'll go into detail in a moment. Also note that the site would be subject to the construction standards of Building Code Appendix G due to the development site's location within the flood zone. So the first floor of the building needs to be elevated to reach design flood elevation. This is an elevation from Northern Boulevard, just showing the existing restaurant and the proposed expansion. Also note there will be approximately 183 spaces on the site. These are delineated spaces, so through the use of valet parking, that could increase to probably close to about 250 spaces. And then we also wanted to talk about, obviously, the proposed rezoning area includes four other parcels that are not owned by the applicant, except Lot 25, which is the former garden center adjacent to the car wash. Three of the four other tax lots in the rezoning area all have active businesses that are permitted by BSA variance with approximately 10 or more years left on their BSA terms. These are active income-producing tenants. And the auto repair and sales business at 234th Street just obtained their extensions of term last year. I believe there's five hearings at the BSA in order to obtain those that extension of term which runs through 2031. I noted the high parking requirement and I wanted to discuss what the potential is for development on these four non-applicant-controlled sites. So compared to the Mazumi site, which is just under 69,000 square feet, the four other tax lots within the rezoning area are all less than a quarter of the size. So development is unlikely here, but it's possible. However, the low 1.0 maximum FAR and the high 1 per 300 parking requirement, that's that one space per 300 square feet of commercial floor area, would really limit the development potential of each of these sites. And there's a lot of text here. I won't go through all of it, but I wanted to describe on, so for example, on Lot 23, that's just shy of 15,000 square foot zoning lot. If you were to build a 1.0 FAR building, assuming that was possible, it would require 49 parking spaces. At a minimum of 200 square feet per parking space, that's at least 9,800 square feet for parking. That doesn't include any driveways maneuverability. That's just stuffing, you know, 200 square feet times 49 onto the site. We think that's unlikely. That's about, you know, two-thirds of the zoning lot that would have to be devoted to parking. So more likely than not, each of these, if development were to occur on each of these four lots, they'd likely strive to fall within the 15-space threshold, which is about 4,500 square feet. That's the largest building you could build and not have to provide parking. So for each of these sites, at about 4,500 square feet, again, the largest building that you could build and still wave out of parking, none of these buildings would reach the maximum of 1.0 FAR. None of them would even reach 0.5 FAR, which is the maximum FAR for residential development. So as you can see, it's a .31 FAR for Lot 23, a .31 FAR for Lot 25, a .46 FAR for Lot 20 because it's a little smaller, and then a .31 FAR for Lot 25. The last thing I'll touch on is because this site is adjacent to Alley Pond Park, it is subject to New York State Department of Environmental Conservation Control. It requires a wetlands permit in order to develop the site. And the applicant has already obtained that DEC wetlands permit. And in doing so, was required to create a site plan that includes extensive storm water management controls. This is one of the diagrams from that site plan. Or this is the site plan. And I'll note that the entire zoning lot is surrounded by bio-retention planters. There's also solid storm drain collectors, overflow structures, and filtered downspouts on the roof. And all of that, all these storm water management controls, collect and water is detained in a 141,000-gallon underground detention chamber. So essentially, any storm water on the site is collected and clean to the satisfaction of the Department of Environmental Conservation. So while this building falls short of local Law 97 requirements, there will be very comprehensive storm water management controls on the site that achieve a level of sustainability that's not ordinarily required. So finally, we wanted to touch on some of the concerns that were expressed by Community Board 11 and the local Douglasston Civic Association, who we've met with both prior to certification and in meetings when the project was certified and then obviously at the Land Use Committee and then the full community board. The community board recommended disapproval of this application, citing several of these concerns that we wanted to touch on. I anticipate that they'll likely, you'll hear some of this in testimony. And we wanted to have an opportunity to address some of these concerns. So the first is that the BSA variance is a more appropriate route for addressing the Mazumi enlargement. So we'll start by saying that, you know, zoning is intended to be comprehensive and we believe here that the C22 zoning would provide comprehensive controls on any potential development within the rezoning area. Those are use and bulk controls, rather than the ad hoc variances, which have really dominated all the non-residential, non-conforming, non-residential use on the strip. You know, reliance on variances is not a sound planning rationale. And so while historically variances have been used to control development on this, within this area, the C22 overlay allows an opportunity to map comprehensive controls. Another concern that we heard is that the community board is concerned over a loss of control on development within the rezoning area. We went to the BSA starting in 2015 and the committee board at that time issued a recommendation in support of Mazumi's variance for this very same expansion. Nothing has changed with respect to the proposal for their expansion. That application was ultimately withdrawn because after several years, a significant amount of resources and time spent by the Chang family in attempting to obtain that variance, the BSA made it clear that they were reluctant to issue that variance. I'll note that, you know, this would have been a brand-new variance on the site. So as opposed to the several other, you know, more recent approvals along the strip and within the rezoning area, those approvals were all for extensions of term of existing variances. So the application that we ultimately withdrew was a new variance and the BSA indicated that they did not support our position on the findings. And, you know, after, you know, several years and, you know, extensive resources spent, determined that there just was not a path forward at the BSA. We'll also note that, you know, regardless of how much community support a variance application has, the BSA ultimately controls whether or not a variance is granted. They are bound by the findings in Zoning Resolution 7211 and 7221, excuse me. So those five findings must be met to the satisfaction of the BSA. Just three more quick points and then I'll wrap it up. We heard that the rezoning area, all these privately-owned properties within the rezoning area should be acquired by the city and absorbed into Alley Pond Park as parkland. The current Alley Pond Park boundary was established back in 1981. You know, there was at least two demappings at that time and earlier, which not only took some of the private property at that time to become parkland, but also de-mapped some streets to become private property. Essentially, an exchange through the process of de-mapping actions. There are no current city plans to acquire this privately-owned area within the rezoning area. This doesn't show up in the Park's capital plan or any other plans that we're aware of, despite, you know, discussion about that very point at the community board. We also heard that this is a spot zoning. While it is a private rezoning, as opposed to an area-wide or city-initiated rezoning, it is not a spot rezoning, includes Mazumi and the neighboring properties, all of which would be subject to that same R12 C22 zoning, which controls permitted uses in bulk. Finally, we heard concern that higher-density zoning is next, that this application somehow represents, you know, a crack in the door to something more dense. The application is very clear. It proposes a C22 commercial overlay within the existing R2 on this historically commercial portion of Northern Boulevard. Any further action would require discretionary approval, either through the city council via ULP applications such as this or at the BSA. Notably, the committee board, as well as the borough presidents, have a role in that process. And then finally, I would just encourage your office to look at CB11's 197A Plan and CPC report, where they recommended that this strip of Northern Boulevard be zoned with a commercial overlay in order to obviate the need for applicants to go to the expense and come to that community board with additional variance applications. So while they are opposed to this rezoning and ultimately the CPC did not approve their 197A plan, this proposal is totally in line with that initial Community Board 11 197A plan by retaining the existing R12 residential zoning and simply adding the C22 overlay. That's everything. Thank you for your patience and letting us walk through that. Myself and other members of the team are happy to answer any questions. And again, we appreciate your time. Myself and and other members of the team are happy to answer any questions. And and again, we appreciate your time.
Thank you. Appreciate your presentation. A few questions. So did city planning propose widening the scope of the catchment area? Or how did we arrive at doing the whole stretch, I guess?
So typically, when the 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 city works with an applicant on on a rezoning, we have to have show a a land use rationale. One of the concerns that was raised about this project is is with spot zoning. And typically, you, you know, can't seek a rezoning that would only benefit a single property or property owner. So what we we have attempted to do in this application, and I think we've 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 done, is is carve out a a small discreet area, including several properties that are similarly affected, and that would similarly benefit from the land use rationale for adding a a C two two overlay here. So to answer your question, there there's never really an option to to only rezone the the Mazumi property. But we always had to always had to look to additional properties that would be similarly affected and benefited by that the C two two overlay.
And did you consider limiting the scope a little bit more of the catchment area?
We we hadn't, but, you know, we're we're obviously happy to have that discussion.
Right, just to massage community concerns. And I don't have a problem mapping it, quite frankly, a commercial, I mean, it's a commercial overlay. And and it would be going from our R one two to a C two dash two, correct?
Well, let me let me say that in a slightly different way. The R one two would stay. Nothing would change with the R one two. So all the controls under the R one two are the same. And it would just be simply adding the C two two overlay. Right, right.
And just talk about the maximum heights a little bit more again.
Sure. So so the maximum height with the C T two overlay is a thirty foot street wall. And this is in comparison to a residential property. And the R one two is permitted to have a twenty five foot street wall. So it's sort of a modest increase in height.
And if the application were not approved, what would happen to lots one, twenty two and twenty two in terms of its environmental remediation status?
If I understand the the question correctly, if if the rezoning were not to be approved, essentially the the status quo would remain. And and for the Mazumi site, that means that it would remain vacant. There would not be an ability to to close the the D E C spill. That, you know, significant remediation has has already been performed, including soil removal. The capping of that 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 site can't occur. And the closing of that spill can't occur without a development plan. So that would have to be reevaluated. And, you know, I don't I don't think there's there's any plan for residential development on that that portion of the property in in the context of the B S A application. And I think just it's it's probably pretty clear, based on decades of of development along the strip, there there's not really a residential option here, you know, putting single family homes on this portion of of Northern Boulevard is just not an option.
Yeah, I I know. I know the car wash pretty well, actually. My car dealership is over here. What sustainability measures are you putting in place outside what's required in Appendix G? So for example, green roofs, solar, rain gardens, and something I didn't hear, which I thought you could entertain, is permeable paving. So just something I I wanted to throw out there and see if there was an appetite for.
Yeah, absolutely. So so what we can do is and and is send over the the site plan and then some of the details from that that Department of Environmental Conservation wetlands permit. You mentioned rain gardens and permeable pavement. We've described them in a slightly different way as bio retention planters. And but essentially, the whole lot, there there'll be a portion that's capped, but water will flow through pipes into an area that is essentially permeable into this one hundred and forty thousand gallon tank below the site, where water will be cleaned and ultimately infiltrated back into Alley Pond Park in a in a much cleaner way. You know, as opposed to the current conditions where runoff from Northern Boulevard just goes straight into to the wetlands area.
Okay, no, that's that's good news. And then my my last question is is on job commitments. Do you have any M W B E goals? Local hiring goals? Are you working with any community C B Os on this? And then also, will this be union built? Or and are you entertaining prevailing wages, obviously with benefits during this construction?
So we I honestly haven't gotten that far yet. That we've we've had initial conversations with with the applicant about agreeing to local and M W B hiring, in addition to hiring goals for for the construction of the property. We we don't have any plans for that yet, but but we're happy to make those commitments to to your office going forward.
And commitments normally for me look like at least minimum thirty percent M W B E goals, and also local hiring, you know, twenty five to thirty percent. And figuring out a C B O perhaps within the catchment area, you know, working with the local council member or local organizations, where we can ensure folks from those particular zip codes or surrounding zip codes, Queens residents can actually benefit from the job opportunities that that would arise due to the construction. So I just want to throw that out there. And we, of course, would love to see that in writing. And who you've talked to will leave up the C B O stuff to you, but I would suggest looking around.
Yeah, we're we're happy to do that. And I'll know, I mean, you know, Mazumi has been in this this community for over a decade now, and and so a multi generational business, the that 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 has ties throughout Queens and in the local community. So I I, you know, this this won't be a heavy lift for them, and and, you know, we can get back to you with something in right.
Okay, great. All right. We'll go back to Lisa now. Any questions from Land Use Staff, Vicki?
No, I think you covered it. So thank you.
Okay. All right. We'll now go to the public.
Thank you.
Our first registered request for speaking is Adam Rothkrug of Rothkrug Rothkrug Inspector. Is he present?
We'll move on. The next, wait, he is present. He's just about to be promoted to panelist. Okay, so Adam, you are unmuted.
Thank you. Everyone can hear me? Thank you for not moving on so quickly. My name is Adam Rothkrug, I'm with Rothkrug Rothkrug Inspector. And we actually represent the two owners that own the four properties that are located within the rezoning area, but we are not formally a part of the applicant team. We originally actually started our own rezoning inquiry with regard to the former Garden Center Lot twenty five, adjacent to the car wash. And we started the rezoning inquiry in two thousand twenty because of the general attitude at the Board of Standards and Appeals, and especially with the way that the Mazumi hearings went. So we monitored those hearings. We are familiar with them. Mazumi did everything they could to satisfy the Board of Standards and Appeals. And it was clear that they were not going to get a variance for something that we thought was very reasonable. I don't think anyone can honestly say that development under an R one zone in this area is is feasible. And when we made our inquiry to city planning and to Douglasson Civic, all of a sudden, we found out that Mazumi had already started the process. So we were happy to join with them or follow their application and participate as needed. So Lot twenty five especially is a lot that it's vacant. The commercial use that had a variance has expired. So now what they're left is with the R one two zoning, which does not really permit them to do anything with it. And as a general legal theory, it's said that zoning goes too far when it denies an owner economically viable use of his land. And and we honestly think that Mazumi has been denied viable use of their lot that they seek to build on, and a similar situation with Lot twenty five. As Frank pointed out, the C two two is a modest commercial rezoning. The high parking requirement leads to usually typically fifty percent of the property being used for parking and fifty percent development, as he said, and F A R point five is about the maximum that you can obtain. Variances hamper long term investment, and that's why you have some of the buildings here, which have just sat vacant or, you know, have uses or buildings that have not seen investments similar to the rest of this community, which is obviously flourishing. So the community kind of threw out some boogeyman scare that maybe you'd have a bowling alley or a movie theater, totally not feasible at locations of this size. So what would we see here? Most likely, another restaurant, a coffee facility, a small retail store, maybe a golf shop. I could use that across from the driving range. But there is no real feasibility that there would be any type of large, obnoxious use that would threaten the park, which we all love. I love hiking in there, and and would be disruptive. And we believe that, again, variances are not really a land use control. Zoning is a control. And we believe the C two two is reasonable. Our owners are committed to, again, preserving and improving the park. We heard the Borough President's requests with regard to some of the other things. And even though we are not an applicant, we are glad to make a commitment to some of those ideas, such as a green, green construction, minority hiring, et cetera. So if there's a way that we can sign on to that as property owners within the rezoning area, we're we're happy to do so. And again, we we think that Douglasston deserves a better gateway with improved zoning would lead to new investment, potentially some nicer uses such as the Mazumi Restaurant. And again, until such time as variances are really a possibility, you know, this seemed to be the most feasible and logical alternative from a land use perspective. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Good to see you. All right, next. I was doing your job. Sorry, Lisa.
Okay, anytime. The next speaker is Roy Gazzetti.
I believe it. Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. My name is Roy Gazzetti. I'm a member of Community Board eleven, who voted against this application. I wanted to say that the board's forty to zero rejection of the plan was only part of the opposition.
Hold on one second. Hold on one second. You're supposed to be on camera.
He's dialing in.
Oh, you're dialing in. Is that permissible?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Please continue, sorry, Roy.
Okay. The fact is, board members engage with many people in the community and getting their feedback is part of the job. So this really is then the support of many more people, especially when they learn the history of the neglect and abuse of the Alley Pond Creek and parkland. It took a long effort plus taxpayers' dollars to bring it back to where it is. The best way now, I believe, to protect the this environment is to reject this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Next registered speaker, Henry Euler.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Please proceed. On camera, please.
Let me see. I I don't know how to put myself on the camera.
Look at the bottom. You'll see video. So looking at your left hand corner.
Yes.
All right, you see mute, and then you'll see video, start video.
No, I don't see that at all.
You don't see that? Okay, all right. Well, you're permitted to to testify with just the of your voice. So it's fine. You can.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
No problem.
Okay, my name is Henry Euler. I am opposed to the establishment of the C T C two two overlay in the Douglasson Alley on the South Side of Northern Boulevard. I'm third vice chair of Queens Community Board eleven and also president of Orvindale Improvement Association. I'm not representing either organization today with the testimony. These are my own views. The lots to be rezoned are adjacent to Alley Pond Park. Developing these lots with as of right businesses will threaten environmental integrity of the adjacent parkland, in my opinion, and potentially Alley Creek and Little Neck Bay. I have learned that over the course of many decades that there have been talks by community leaders, including several members on Community Board eleven, for the city to purchase these lots and returning the park the land to parkland. The land itself could be used for passive purposes, like athletic fields and other uses, without having the negative impact on the surrounding parkland that businesses may have. Currently, the businesses along the stretch of Northern Boulevard are operating on variances. This means that at regular intervals, the owners of the businesses have to renew these variances at the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals. This gives the community an opportunity to give input on how these businesses operate and to offer suggestions for conditions to be placed in variance renewals if the application is granted. In other words, the community retains some control on what occurs on this, the slots. Even with businesses that have variances that do not expire, community residents are able to request compliance hearings from the B S A in order to address problems. The current applicants include owners of Mazumi Restaurant, who are requesting the zoning change, do not wish to attempt to seek a variance in order to construct a the addition to their business. They claim it's too expensive and difficult to obtain. Well, it's never been made quite clear, why did B S A object to their application? They just keep saying they object to it, and and they don't give us the reasons why. It's very unusual to me, because B S A is usually very willing to go and and help businesses with their with their requests. The businesses want to bypass the B S A and the public input that allows when variances are considered. And so I think I mentioned all that before. For these and other reasons, members of the Community Board eleven unanimously oppose the granting of this rezoning at its May second full board meeting. Zero yes, forty no, three abstentions. Abstentions count as no votes. This was an impressive vote. Despite the respect that many of the members feel for the applicants who have operated their restaurants successfully for many years, it is obvious that the board members felt that the rezoning application was not a good idea, especially for this site and budding parkland. I would hope that the Borough President will come to the same realization. Thank you for letting me testify today. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Next speaker. Adidoyen Adiko.
I think, sorry, Lisa, I don't see that person on the attendee list. I think the only speaker remaining is Paul Di Benedetto. So I think we can just go right to him.
Mr. Di Benedetto? Please activate.
Yes. Yes, I'm I'm here. Unfortunately, this is a different version of of Zoom for us that we typically use. And I can only you can only see an old photo of me. I'm sorry. I just don't not see anything here that says how to activate the camera. So I'm just gonna have to testify. Is that okay, Donovan?
Yes, sure. And the picture looks great. Like the glass.
It's an old photo. All right, I just, thank you. Thank you very much. I hope I I'm glad that to to be here today. Thank you so much. Just in brief, I'm just gonna say that I Tony, I'm sorry, Henry. What Henry just said before is is basically the way I feel. It's if it was a forty three to zero vote, the Community Board. I am the president, although I'm here today as an individual. You all, you know, I'm the president of Bay Side Historic Society. This is a very crucial area with its history. And as well, I am also the Community Board eleven Parks Chair. And And, you know, this, if you, if you look at the map that they showed before, this strip of land is entirely within the park. Yes, it's been private property for years, but it should have been included as part of the park years ago. There is, as the Parks Chair, I just called a meeting for us to discuss ways in which the city can look to acquire these properties and to finally set this map straight. Once again, I strongly, I'm gonna send my testimony right after this meeting. I'll include a map. You can clearly see that this strip of property is directly within the park. The city should buy it. It could either go back to nature or it could be part of a Parks project like you have across the street. It should be green space. I have no problem with Mazumi or any business that wants to operate within the Community Board eleven, and I support them. I've been to Mazumi myself. It's a great restaurant, good people. But not here. This really should go the other way. The only way that we have any ability to, but once this goes to commercial, the property values increase dramatically. We don't know what's gonna be built in those spaces. And the legal team will say whatever they possibly can to get this done and try and convince you. But as you can see, the community board voted the way it did unanimously. Even the chair, who was in support of this, at the end of the meetings voted no because he knew it wasn't the best thing for our community. And as well, it's just, I mean, I've basically stated how we feel about the parkland there and other such issues. So I'm gonna leave it at that. But thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
There are no further speakers.
Alrighty. Well, I want to thank you all for joining us today. Seeing no other individuals want to testify. We'll see you at our next scheduled land use public hearing on June ninth, starting at nine thirty AM. I want to thank the applicants and thank all the members of the public who testified. We look forward to working on this application. Thank you so much. Take care.